All right, so now being 5:45, I'll call the July 26th meeting of the Board of Selectment Order pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. We've posted the meeting information on our agenda, which is on the town's website. We're making every attempt to let people join the meeting, and we are not doing anything in person at this time. The recording is not to be considered the official record of the meeting. All right, so first item on the agenda is some appointments. We're doing emergency management. Steven Silva, John Schuested, Kathy Ferguson, and then David Zioli to Council on Aging. Liz, are you ready for us to make those appointments?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we appoint the following three people to emergency management. Steven Silva will be indefinite, John Schuested, and Kathy Ferguson until June 30th, 2023. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, so we're done with that one. Finally, we've got David Zioli, Council on Aging, until 6:30, 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, or I'm sorry, Mr. Russo?
I, yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes, okay. Liz, was that it for the appointments?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is approval of application for membership, and this is Power Options Energy Consortium. And looks like we have the option to join this. It's associated with the Dennett Solar Project. Liz, did you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. So if we're to pursue any solar projects or natural gas projects, and we don't want to go through a traditional RFP process, the other option that the town has available is to join one of these power purchasing consortiums. Power Options is the one that's on the table. It appears that our annual membership fee would be $550, and that's based on our energy usage. And we're not bound to anything with them, but it would be, it seems to be a wise investment if we are serious about pursuing the rooftop solar Dennett, or potentially some other projects in the way of natural gas savings. So we could do that for a year, and then if we find that we're not utilizing it, we're not locked in to continue on with them.
Mark, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I think this is a necessary step in moving forward on the Dennett thing. It seems like a low-risk thing at this point, and we'll see what happens over a year.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
All right, so you need us to vote the approval of the application for membership? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for membership in the Power Options Consortium. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. All right, I should have said earlier too about the consent agenda. Mark, is there anything you want removed from the consent agenda?
No, I'm good.
Okay, there was going to be one item that was going to be added to the consent agenda, and that was for the fire, the fire use of town grounds for their, a little bit of a festival?
Yes, it was for September 11th to have a service, a coffee hour, also a craft fair. They were going to sell hot dogs and hamburgers for donations to the firefighters association. And that would be for using the area near the ball fields, as well as the townhouse parking lot. And Saturday, I believe it falls on this year, September 11th, beginning at 8:00 a.m., and it's the Fire Department and Firefighters Association. And they would be in contact, obviously, with the Board of Health, and they've already discussed it with Matt Clancy.
Great, all right, thank you. So that's one addition to the consent agenda. I would ask to have the June 21st meeting taking off the consent agenda, and to consider that is a separate item.
Thank you. I also would have asked for that.
Great, okay. All right, very good. All right, so let's move on to speed safety zones. Hi, Rob.
Do we need to vote on the consent?
Why don't we vote on it when we get to the consent agenda portion?
Okay, great, yep.
Hi, Rob.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad.
We were hoping for an update of how we're coming with the speed safety zones with, yeah, the painting.
Yep, I have stencils in. I ordered them on last year's budget, the beginning of this year's budget. I ordered new signs. They're going to be 20 mile an hour advisory signs instead of the regulatory, and these ones are going to state safety zones. I have the stencils for, that'll spell out safety zone. I'm waiting on white paint to come in. I'm getting some glass bead for like reflective media to put in with the paint to make it, you know, a little more reflective at night. And then I have yellow, like U-channel plastic things that go on the signposts that reflect at night, too. Those are going to go on, the ones that state safety zone, to help bring more attention to the signs. As far as like distance and stuff goes, OCPC said the signs I put in was a pretty good distance, had a good line of sight. So hopefully this will help bring a little more attention to the area.
Mark, questions?
Yeah, so the, the painting on the stencils will just spell out the word safety zone?
Yes.
Big letters?
Yes, like two foot tall letters.
Two foot, pretty good. Okay, and those are reflective as well?
The paint, I'm putting glass bead in there. It's a reflective media. It'll help, you know, make the paint illumination at night.
Okay, and you feel like that's really kind of getting the message out there?
I hope so. I mean, it's going to be painted across the lane, the travelway.
And that's both entrance, entrances both ways to the safety zone?
Yeah.
Great, can't wait. Any idea of when we'll be actually putting paint on the ground?
Hopefully within a couple of weeks. This week, we're doing crack sealing. I got a crack sealing. I rented a machine. We're going to do a few days of it. And then next week, I have a road grader coming in. We're going to regrade Montello, and then haul in some material for West Street, because that is in dire need of attention, too. And then hopefully the, hopefully the paint and the new sign come in just after that, and we can get on that and get it over with.
Beautiful. I've been a long time, really look forward to seeing if this works. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Rob, before you have the language, do you have like a line or two, something that indicates that like you've crossed into the safety zone?
It's got, what do you mean, like on the road itself?
Yeah, a line like across the road, and then you're now in the safety zone?
I was gonna, I was gonna pair the words safety zone. The letters are like two foot tall by about 10 inches wide per letter. So it's going to go right in the traveling, right at the line of the, you know, the signpost with the reflective strip on it to really kind of like say you're entering a zone.
Great, that sounds great. I can't wait to see it.
Okay.
All right, yeah, let us know if there's anything we can do to, to help with your progress.
No, just waiting for everything to come in, and then a little, you know, break in the weather and some good scheduling. Away we go.
Okay, we'll hold letters if need to be.
Thank you.
Perfect, all right. Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
So Kristin, did you have a question? I saw you light up a little bit. Okay, that's not, okay. All right, well, thank you, Rob. I don't think, do you have any other business with us, or are you going to take off?
No, that's all, unless you, you know, want to know anything else.
No, no, that's great. Can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
Good night, Rob. Thanks for joining us.
Have a good one.
You, too.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, so now we're on to cable contract in Area 58. So Mark, do you want to take the lead on this one?
Yeah, I think actually this item was requested by John, and so maybe there'll be more to discuss at the next meeting. I think maybe we need to save it until then. I'm not sure what he was aiming at with the contract. So I think probably it makes sense to just wait for the, the next meeting. It was brought to my attention that the last couple of meetings were not up on Area 58 as of the weekend, and I wrote to Rich, the Executive Director of Area 58, and both those meetings are up. So we are now up to date on that. And I guess, I think the rest of it, discussion about live meeting broadcasts and the hybrid model probably should wait until John's around.
Okay, and maybe the, the update to the BS, BOS Operating Principles, the liaisons, because that was his suggestion as well?
Yes.
Oh, and, yeah, oh, the, the last agenda item. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that, I think, yeah, we'll need a robust discussion on that one.
Okay, perfect. All right, so that sounds good. All right, so now on to Carver Urban Renewal Project. I know Liz has been in contact with the town administrator. I've tried to reach out to the, the chairman of the Redevelopment Authority. Haven't heard back from her yet. Liz, do you want to, do you have anything you would like to say on this?
Yeah, so I reached out to the town administrator's office after our last meeting with some of the questions we had, if they were to change the zoning in that area. Was it just for that one project? Were they looking at the height requirements from what we saw in the news article? I sent questions about that, as well as with the land in Plimpton directly butts, like would there be a buffer where they did not change the height requirement? And I have not heard anything back. So I think we need to try maybe a different approach for reaching out. I know that they have some different things going on there in the town that I think might be contributing to the delay in getting back to us with information. I would say at the very least that news story that we heard about was indicating that there might be a meeting in August of the Redevelopment Authority. So I think we really need to stay on top of that. And I'm going to try reaching out to the planning department. Bree had helped me reach out to them with information about the new chair of the Redevelopment Authority, but I think we need to try contacting some different offices to get the information we need in enough time if we want to make a response and get information out to our residents certainly, to keep them informed. So I think we need to go kind of full throttle on this and maybe trying to contact some different offices, really.
Okay, perfect. So you're working it from the town administrator angle. I will continue to work from the chairman of the RPA. I'll also ask Old Colony Planning Council to get involved with us. They can certainly advocate for us as well with what they're proposing for changes. And, and I've signed up for every meeting with, with Carver. There was no way to sign up for the meetings with the RPA. I asked her to please let us know. I'll follow up again, but through signing up for meetings through the town clerk's office, I should still get a meeting notification from this group. So we'll continue to stay on top of this. There are, there's lots of talk about different things that are potentially going to happen. I don't think anything has been, as far as we are aware, has been set in stone. It's a lot of discussion at this point. So we're going to, to get involved. They're up our involvement and, and make sure that we're looking out for the residents that are going to be affected in, on Heather's Path and Montello, and also Toby and over on Maria Lane. So this affects a large number of residents with the placement of this project.
Christine, I think there's a chat on here that maybe we should read or ask the author to speak to directly.
Okay, we're concerned about light and noise remediation, as are we. There are a lot of jokes how it's going to affect Plimpton residents, people on a walk-through. They also want to put, to put 200 tractor trailer base facing Heather's Path and Toby Lane instead of putting them on the 44 route side. So we hadn't received anything official about any type of change to the plan, but we are certainly going to look into this. Melissa, did you have something that you wanted to, to add? Have you seen an update to the plan?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, I, we received a, I guess, kind of like a backdoor plan that somebody on one of the boards over there had supplied to us so that we could have an idea as to what was actually going to happen over there. And so it's a whole new plan that they have. It's a 1.3 million square foot building with, I think it's a 700,000 square foot building aside of it. The way that they have it structured is that it's going completely around the backside of Heather's Path. And there's also a clear shot to Toby's Lane across, you know, the cranberry bogs, across Vic Street. They have decided that they want to, and there was a lot of jokes, apparently, about how, and lots of giggles about how this is going to affect all of our Plimpton troublemakers. And they basically said that they're putting a tractor trailer base on the side facing Heather's Path and Toby's Lane. I don't know, I can't say it's deliberate, but it kind of, from the jokes, it kind of sounded like maybe there's some truth to it. And then they also were talking about raising the height of the buildings to 65 feet. They want floodlights for 65 feet. And they made apparently a lot of comments about how, you know, how badly this is going to affect Plimpton and, oh, well.
Could you get us a copy of that plan?
Yep, absolutely. It's not the best. It's a, it's a picture of a photograph. So it's not the best plan. You know, the person who supplied it to me, you know, kind of gave it to me, you know, through unofficial channels, let's just put that way. But, but yeah, I can definitely send that to you for sure. And I appreciate you guys being on top of it. And, you know, obviously, we're all really concerned, and it's going to affect a lot of people. I think people tend to think it's just going to be Heather's Path, Montello Street issue, but it's not. I mean, the people around Toby Lane, I think they're actually going to be more affected than we are based on where they want to put this huge building. So.
Yeah, that would be great, Melissa, because then we can reach out to the appropriate parties and find out if there's any validity to it. And if there's been major changes to the plan, I'm not sure how that affects the, the permitting process. So there's plenty of, for us to look into, but if we, if you could get us that document, then we can get the ball rolling and, and start making sure that, that we're doing what we can to protect our residents.
All right, thank you. And I'll definitely send that to you guys tomorrow. Appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you. So I think you, do you have my email address or Liz's email address, Melissa?
I know I definitely have yours, Christine, so I can send it to you.
Beautiful, yeah, send it to me, and then I'll get it to Liz and Mark and John, and we'll reach out to the appropriate parties in Carver and find out what the, what the scoop is with it.
Thank you. I really appreciate your support, your ongoing support. You guys have been awesome. So thank you.
Melissa, I just wanted to mention, a while back, we changed our email domain. So my previous email is still cjoy, but it's now at plimpton town.org.
Plimpton town.org?
Yes.
I should be able to remember that.
You have the up-to-date one.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I can, I don't know, I don't know how to chat, but you could probably put it in the chat, too, if you wanted to, Liz. Thank you. I'm low-tech, low-tech skills. Okay, all right, I see John is back with us now. So do you want to go back to the cable contract, Mark, now that John's here?
Glad to, his item, so sure.
Yeah, I was going to do a little update on cable, but this, it's, right now, cable is all involved with the fiber and the telephone line that's kind of going a little askew. So we'll wait, we'll wait on that. But I did want to talk about the Comcast contract. Comcast has an agreement that they will make, they will make available to the town internet for any of the town sites. So like the transfer station, the townhouse, the fire station, the library. And I wanted to see who should approach them. I'd like to get the old townhouse with internet and have, and not have to pay for it, obviously, because it should be part of that contract. But Mark, I didn't know, I know you're our Cable 58, but I didn't know if the Comcast contract, whether you felt that fell under you. So I wanted to...
Yeah, and I negotiated that thing, however, many years ago. Not an easy thing. I, so I, I'm glad to work on that. I, I think with the permission of the board, I'd ask if maybe we could recruit Liz to see about contacting Comcast, and I'll be glad to support her in that and see, see what we can get to happen.
Okay, that would be good.
Liz, is that all right? We'll work on that together.
That's good.
Okay.
The other thing, I noticed that Halifax posts the contract, their contract with Comcast on the website, the town website. I was wondering why we don't do the same, just so it's available.
It'll take a minute. I'll just put it up.
And in that, it defines all the different places that they give the town access.
You know, as a side note, the irony of that contract, as I remember, it was maybe 80 or 100 pages and really dense text. And, and yet, the negotiation just came down to two numbers, the percentage that would be charged that would fund this, and the amount of capital. It was an interesting negotiation.
All right, so John, you all set on Comcast?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we'll hold Area 58 until a later date?
Yeah, let me, I need to talk to Liz and the police chief, and then, either next meeting or a meeting after.
Okay, all right. So John, we're on your request to update the BOS Operating Principles with the liaison language?
Yeah. Liz, you have a sheet you could post, just so we're all looking at the same Anyways, it's part of the package, so you, I'm sure you have. But I just thought that since we're addressing the different protocols we operate under, that how we interact with departments, committees, et cetera, when there appears to be a need for mediation, that we ought to have some clear-cut rules. And I drew up something that I thought might work, and open to comments.
I'm trying to find the right button. Oh, I think I have it here. One second.
So John, I guess a couple of questions. What, what prompts this, or what prompts the consideration of adding this?
Over time, I've looked back at some of the issues we've had. You know, I've been in town a long time, and it seemed like the, it was never clear how to resolve or who should step into an issue. Now we've got Liz. I think most of the issues we have fall under her domain as town administrator, and I think she has the respect of the people. But every while, once in a while, there's going to be something that comes up. I can't look out in the future, but I know in the past, we've had them. And this was my attempt to say, we're, we're looking at other things as protocols that this should be one we should approach.
So does the language you're proposing, does, does it come from another town or another source?
The only one, really, the, I put the BOS chair will assign a BOS member, because in other things I've read from other towns, while I didn't plagiarize them, the chair was always the one that made the decision. And it seemed to me, in our case, it should be the same. And that the assignment preference, because we have liaisons for every department, that it only made sense to first say, okay, for instance, I have fire. If it was an issue with the fire and some other board, that the chair would say, Liz, if you don't think this is one you should resolve, then the chair would poach me first. I think in a lot of cases, we have a little more knowledge than some of, like, if it was landmark, clearly I would look to you, because I know you have a lot of operational knowledge that I'm not going to have in that area. I thought that the issue of where there's an immediate family member, we should say, just spell it out. Now, what's an immediate family member, you know, we can put some words around that. To me, it's spouse, children, siblings, and grandparents, but you guys may not agree. So, and should it go first? I was thinking of cousins, but then you get into, and brother laws in this town, everybody's related, so that won't work. And then if one of us declined, for whatever reason, then the chair goes back and fills that role.
So I, I have some concerns, and I appreciate what you're getting at here, but I'm a little concerned about the liaison system, which I think I originally suggested back a few years ago, but it was meant as kind of an informal way to open channels of communication between board members in various committees and boards. And I'm a little concerned that what's being proposed here kind of adds a level of formality and even rigidity that wasn't really intended in the initial liaison setup. And I, I, I think it feels to me like this is a solution looking for a problem. I, I think we sort of, with a fair amount of fluidity, been able to sort out who should be doing what in this. And I'm a little concerned that occasionally the liaison might be the, not be the best person to mediate in a situation. And I, I, I'm a little concerned there may be just unintended consequences here. And I, I think when we, once we get down to the level of having to divine cousins, and we're just getting a little more deep into this than we need to for something that really hasn't been a problem along the way. So though I appreciate the effort, I, I think I'm not in, in favor of this as, as presented.
I'm, I think you're reading into this more than what is meant here. This is not to step into the liaison relationship. For instance, if the Fire Department says, hey, I need to talk to a selectman, I've got some issues, then naturally, they would come to me. If it's open space, it would be to you, Mark. I mean, that's not what this is intended to do. What this is intended to do, when an issue rises between two boards or committees that is causing some concern, and we're hearing about it, that we have a methodology for dealing with how we're going to work to mediate it. But the day-to-day liaison relationship? No, that works great, and we should keep it up and just keep moving. I, I see this as a one-off. We might never have this in a year.
I, I, I hear you. I, I just don't feel like it's been an issue that's a problem. And I think if we got to the level of needing to formalize this, and probably want the whole board to be acting sort of collectively. So I understand what you're saying, and I, but I think I wouldn't be in favor, at least at this point.
My, it seems, my concern is that it seems like we're kind of circumventing Liz's role, where she's in there day-to-day to do the managing. And I think the way that we have it working now is working, is actually, I think, working pretty well, where if she feels like she needs to get us involved in a situation, she does. working pretty well, where if she feels like she needs to get us involved in a situation, she does. So, and I don't think this is how this reads. It reads that basically the chair will determine whether or not the issue is best for her to handle or for us to resolve. And I think where she's boots on the ground, she should be the one who makes that determination.
Yeah, well, this wasn't meant to circumvent this. This was to say, if an issue arises, then it might be Liz who brings it forth, saying, you know, this is between boards. And if the board is outside her purview in terms of, let's say assessors, that this is a methodology for how the chair can at least step in. If Liz says, I feel comfortable, it never even has to come to us. I mean, I'm sure Liz does this all the time, that she works with boards and committees and we never hear about it because it's it's part of her role and she solves it.
Yeah, as it should be.
So I only bring things to the board's attention if I feel like it's something that could have farther reaching impacts. You know, I feel like that part has worked well all along. I feel like we have a good system going in that regard. Something I do think that would be beneficial for us in the long run would be, and I'm happy to take the lead on that, be putting together an org chart that just kind of shows where things stand. Because I, I find that it comes up not often, but from time to time, that there's kind of a, an underlying confusion about the difference between, say, elected officials or boards versus appointed officials. And I think for some people, it might be helpful to actually see it mapped out, like which things are under which umbrella, like just to use assessors, for example. Like they appoint the assistant assessor. And I think some people might not even realize that, that that department had, just using them as an example, they were the first ones I thought of. People might not even realize that. Or say, for example, the board of health, an elected board, they appoint the health agent. And I think for some people, like they might not even have any knowledge of that. I mean, we all know that because we're all involved in everything day-to-day. But I think it might be helpful for some people just to see that mapped out. And oh, okay, I never knew that. All right, so they're elected and they're kind of over here. We still all need to work together and I think we, we all do very effectively. But that was something I had thought of kind of separate from this discussion, that it might not be the worst idea in the world to kind of map it out.
Yeah, I like that. Mark, John, what do you think about that, creating an organizational chart?
If it helps particularly on this issue of elected officials or appointed officials as versus one that we appoint, I, I think that's a really good thing to, to get that point out. Absolutely.
I'd like to see it and then we'll see how it goes.
Okay, that sounds good. That sounds like an excellent plan. Okay. All right, so now on to town administrators' updates.
So we were made aware today that there's an active COVID case in town. And they're watching to see if there are any others that sprout up because of that. I don't have any specific information, certainly. Just to kind of refresh everyone's memory, it's all protected medical information. So no one from the town gets any specifics, like were they vaccinated or unvaccinated? We don't get anything like that. It's just simply numbers. There was a COVID case in town. But that got reported today and that was a little concerning because we haven't been getting those alerts or anything since the end of May. So that was something new that came through today. As far as some of the grant projects going on, mitigation plan is coming to the end of the line. After we concluded that workshop, I've been communicating with the consultant on and off for the last couple of weeks. And they're going to be putting together our final plan. And then that needs to go to FEMA and to MEMA for review. But from what I've been told, they usually do make suggestions. They're very active in their review process. So I'm assuming that there'll be a kind of round of comments and another final draft circulated before we have the final end product. But that's moving along well. The green communities projects are moving along. One of the things that I think kind of precipitated, John, bringing up the wifi at the townhouse was that one of the projects we're doing are wifi thermostats for the old townhouse. And as it stands now, where we don't have wifi in that building, they're just installing the thermostats and going to leave all the information so that they can be programmed at a later date. So I think that that's worthwhile to pursue it and see if there's a chance for some free or low-cost internet and wifi access at that building. For the thermostats, obviously, but also I think it would be a nice feature for people utilizing the building to be able to connect to wifi if they were making a presentation or doing something there. So we're happy to see that through. And I will try to establish contact with somebody from Comcast in their licensing division and see what we can figure out as far as that goes. We were formally accepted to GATRA as a member community. And John and Colleen Thompson and myself have a meeting tomorrow to kind of go over some of the particulars and what does that mean for our transportation needs? Colleen Thompson's done a great job. She put together a whole list of questions really kind of in-depth. And I think that that'll be helpful for us to understand how they might better serve us. My main kind of frame of reference for this has to do with using our van, like the large van that the Mastar grant paid mostly for. I think using that vehicle to the best of its ability and freeing up the older van so that the board of assessors can use it when they're doing site inspections to some of the retreat lots. Or if we have, if we're kind of doubled up on appointments one day. We have Jim doing most of the runs, but we do have Jackie volunteer times. And she also works in his absence. So just thinking if we made the big van kind of the primary vehicle for council on aging. We've been doing better with that lately, but I think really kind of pushing use of that vehicle because it can carry more people. And then using the older minivan as more of a backup vehicle. I think that that's the way that we would want to go with it. But it'll be interesting to hear what GATRA has to say. And if they'll be using some of their own vehicles or are they providing staff to utilize our large van? Like from what I understand, they have very different frameworks depending on the community. So I'm interested to hear what they have to say tomorrow. So we've been working on that. And we're also, we have a meeting of the financial team today. John joined us for that. He's the liaison for that. And it was a really good meeting. I'm very excited about our two new financial people, our treasurer collector and our town accountant. And I think that this is the start of something very exciting as far as kind of mapping out our future goals and really looking at our financial reporting protocols and everything. So a lot of good energy today. I'm, I'm excited about moving forward with those new staff. So that's it for my update. I do have something in correspondence. This is a letter from Ang Lee and Ang Lee Attorneys at Law. And this is regarding the town-owned land on Old Brook Street. I think John Trainor mentioned at a prior meeting, he had approached Mr. Norrie and they were discussing the possibility of Habitat or another nonprofit doing the senior housing project potentially on that land. So Mr. Norrie's attorney sent us a letter and it says at the end that they want it read into the record. So I'm just going to read the correspondence. Dear Honorable Members of the Board, this firm represents John W. Norrie individually, Plimpton Sand and Gravel Company, John W. Norrie, President, Carver, Middleborough Cranberry Company and Off Brook Street Realty Trust. Collectively, the above entities own lots 14, 23, 25 and 27, among others, that directly abut the land owned by the town of Plimpton, designated on the Plimpton Assessors map as lot 14, 26. It has come to our attention that there is interest by the town in building a shelter on lot 14, 26. And shelter would allegedly cater to the homeless, elderly, underprivileged individuals or families, victims of abuse or children or any combination of the previously mentioned. On behalf of my clients, I would like to express our strong opposition to any such use of the property for a shelter or similar facility. We feel that the land has many potential issues related to any such development, including the following. Property has no frontage on a public way and extensively maneuvering to procure such access would be required at great expense to the town. Number two, the private way that the property currently abuts and provides the only access to is subject to heavy truck traffic on a daily basis. Not only do trucks filled with sand and gravel come and go all day, but other commercial vehicles utilize the road to access properties located behind the subject lot. Number three, one of the abutting properties is an industrial site that poses possible health and safety hazards to potential residents, clients of any proposed shelter or similar facility. My clients would not want to be responsible for individuals who might wander onto the property. Number four, use of the property as the shelter or similar facilities does not fit in with the character and nature of the surrounding neighborhood. It is our understanding that the town has other property in its possession that would be better locations for such a proposed use and would face fewer challenges. We encourage the board of selectmen to explore the other options available to the town for such a proposed use. My client would be happy to purchase the lot at a fair market price if the town was interested in selling. Most funds could be used towards a facility at another location. Please read this letter into the official record at the next meeting of the board of selectmen or as an alternative by appearing before the board to state our opposition to propose a plan to place a shelter or similar facility on lot 14, 26. Very truly yours, Tim B. Ang Lee, S5.
Well, that's unfortunate how ill-informed they are.
Then, uh, let me just speak a little bit. They're not ill-informed. The reason I went out there was because the fire chief asked me to introduce John Norrie to him because the fire chief is looking for a county building for, they have a regional, I guess it's an emergency type management outfit, is that something along that lines, right, Liz? The.
Sure of the particulars of what he was looking for. I think they wanted, weren't they looking for a meeting location or something?
Yeah, but they wanted to be able to have a piece of land that they could put a.
I think it was the chief's association or something.
Right. So I said, fine, I got a, I want to talk to John Norrie anyways, about the Habitat for Humanity issue we were looking into. I never said shelter, I never said low income. I said, we are, we have a piece of land. It's on, it's on Old Brook Street, it abut your land. And that we're thinking of looking as a place for potentially a Habitat for Humanity type building. And John expressed his reservations. He never, he never put it the way the lawyer put it. He said, I'm concerned that, you know, I've got a lot of dust storm going on at times because of the sand and gravel operation. And I'm also going to potentially build a power building, a place to put in batteries for the excess solar electricity that comes off his solar farm. And I left it that, John, before we do anything, I'll let you know, but that we believe that this is a valid street. He said he thought it was abandoned. And I said, we have to check it. To be abandoned, it has to be voted at a town meeting. And I've not been able so far to be able to find a vote that would say that the town was abandoning the street. Talked to Alan Botrino and he's offered to look into that for us. I think we're going to find that in fact, Old Brook Street is a valid street. And then we have frontage and therefore we can put a building there. The question then becomes, he says he would be willing to buy, to purchase it at fair value. Now, fair value to me is not 3,000, 5,000, 20,000. We should go out and get it appraised as a building lot. And if that's six figures, then that's what we should be looking at if we decided we wanted to sell it. And I think that's the approach we should take and we need a lot more information. I think that I, I'm surprised that John took that tack of going to the lawyer saying, this is the way I want to position this.
Mark, you look like you've got something you want to say.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking. I, it brings up a lot of issues that we've addressed recently. I mean, it sounds like the key here is whether we in fact have access or not. And I guess we have to pursue that. It, it is a little unfortunate this was written up in terms of a shelter and concern about all that. And I, I, the Habitat for Humanity option was clearly something different. And I understand Mr. Norrie or his attorneys concerned about the dust and the sand and gravel operation. But we have lately taken the tack that selling town land is generally something we're not interested in. And I, I think that would go for this piece as well. If it weren't for residential, it still could be town use. And there's so many other ways that we're kind of short on buildable town land for storage buildings and all the rest. So it feels to me the key right now is to know if we really do have access, whether this was abandoned or not. And it's a work in progress. The one other thing I would just ask Liz, can you share that letter with us? Just for our files as we go.
Sure, sure, we can send it around. I would suggest at some point, maybe by the end of the week, I think if Bree responds to them, maybe emails them and just lets them know that we received the letter and that it was read into the record at tonight's meeting, just so that they're not left wondering.
That sounds like a good suggestion. Yeah, I agree with you, Mark. I'm not interested in selling the parcel. I would like to know if we've got frontage. You know, if we do, the town's got the right to use the, the parcel. The best way that, that we see fit. So is that something that Alan's going to do, John, to determine if we have frontage?
He's going to see whether or not the street is actually a town of Plimpton Street, a valid street.
So if it was an accepted way, that's what he's looking for, to see if the town ever accepted?
No, it wasn't, it was in fact Brook Street before this Brook Street was straightened out. So the question is, when they straightened out and made the new Brook Street, was Old Brook Street abandoned by the town and voted so at a town meeting?
Okay.
If it was, then Norrie's got a valid issue in saying that there is not frontage on a valid street.
Okay.
But if Old Brook Street is still a street, then we have enough frontage and it's a valid lot to be built upon.
Okay. Great.
I think as far as what we want to do, we should wait until we got all these facts in and
Yeah.
decide where we want to go with this.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. All right, Liz, thanks for reading that into the record. And John, thank you for making arrangements with, with Al to, to do some research on this road to see what the, the story is with Old Brook Street. Okay, any other correspondence, Liz? Okay, John, did you have anything you wanted to add tonight?
Just that I read the minutes and I'm okay with them. I don't know if you did the consent.
No, no, we haven't done that consent. We did add the Fire Association and the, I think the fire department are planning a, an event on 9/11 that was added to the consent agenda. That they've got all the necessary approvals, they're working on that. But we haven't gotten that far yet. All right, so John Wilhamsen, anything that you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right. And I see Dave Alberti or Vicky, Dave, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
There we are. We just curious about copper.
Gotcha, okay.
We've got a lot of good information there, so we'll watch it.
Good, awesome. Good. Awesome. Okay, and then I know Kristin's here, and Eric, and Kathy. We're all here for both Montello, which looks like it's being regraded by the highway very soon. I thought he said he was going to do that next week. And then we are on, working on the Carver. Did, did any of you folks have anything you wanted to add?
No, he actually regraded it last week. He's been doing an amazing job of keeping up with the road, so.
Awesome.
We're really happy with it. And we were just here to see what's going on with Carver.
Great. Well, I'm glad to hear about the regrading. That's excellent news. All right, so we're on to the consent agenda. So we had requested to have the minutes from 6:21 removed. So the minutes of 7:12:21 that were written by Mark, and I like that format, and the warrants paid, which the warrants paid amount is $144,689.51. And an explanation is that these were all of our insurance payments for fiscal year 2022 for the buildings. So that's why it was such a large number. And then the fire station approval of use of town property for 9/11 are approved on the consent agenda. So before we move on to other business, let's do the minutes from 6:21. So Mark, you pulled those out too. What did you have on these?
If I'm remembering correctly, I just had one thing, and it's on the second page under Operating Principles, number 12. I think we voted to add the clause at the beginning, a long clause or a long phrase about the working meetings being excluded from recording. So that, what should be added to the italics there, which says, whenever possible and as a courtesy to the public, open sessions will be recorded. Before that, the thing we had voted on was a posted session or, or forgive me. I, or the increased language was, with the exception of working meetings. And then that was defined as a posted session, open to the public, called to informally. And then it goes on there. So there's that other phrase that needs to be added. Is that what you were noticing, Christine?
I noticed that too. And yeah, I think it was, just to add on to that, I believe it was for the purpose of a single topic or a single matter, that basically that was the purpose of a working meeting. So it was still posted, just was not going to be recorded. So I had that one as well. And then also on page one, we didn't need a roll call vote after the declaration about the new virtual meetings. So we've got a roll call vote under the, after that, and we didn't need a roll call vote. I think we voted later in the meeting to accept that for the town, but that was not the point at which we voted it. We voted remote participation after the 960 waiver discussion. So that's where we voted it on your minutes, Mark, is to accept the remote participation for the town.
All right, so that's the July 12th one?
Yeah, well, the one that, mine is the June 21st. I don't think we need a roll call vote after I opened the meeting.
That's me.
Yeah, that one's, those are yours, Bree. I mean, if you guys want to leave it, I don't recall doing a roll call vote. I mean, we typically don't. It's just a declaration that pursuant to the Chapter 20 Acts that blah, blah, blah. There's never a vote taken on that. It's just a statement that's read. Okay. All right, so let's scratch the roll call vote after the declaration. And then, Mark, did you want to provide, Bree, with the language that we're substituting in Operating Principles 12?
Yep, Bree, I'll get that additional language either tonight or very, very early tomorrow morning to you.
Yeah, and we updated it in the Principles itself, so I can send it to her as well.
Actually, I'll let you do that then, Liz. Will you be on top of that? Thank you. I just, I'm going to be on the road, and so that might be easier.
Okay, that sounds perfect.
Do you still want it italicized? Yes?
What's that?
She said, do you still want it italicized?
Yes.
Awesome. Great. Thanks, Bree. Okay, on to, well, actually, how about before we do rants and raves, do you guys have any future agenda items that you'd like to have discussed?
You need to vote on the minute.
Oh, we do need to vote. You're right. Thanks, Bree. All right, before we do that, I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from 6:21 as amended.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, thanks, Bree.
Actually, consent agenda as well, I think we need to vote on.
No, actually, the consent agenda, you don't have to vote on it. It's basically we've, as a group, consented to adopt those through the consent agenda process. So it just eliminates the need for a roll call vote. But if you'd like to take, if you'd like to take a minute, vote on that, we certainly can.
I may have it mixed up, but when I've been involved with consent agendas with other organizations, there was still a vote. But instead of a vote on each individual item, it was on the whole package that was the consent agenda.
Well, let's do that. Let's do that. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept on the consent agenda, the minutes of 7:12:21, the warrants paid for the amount that I indicated earlier, which was the $144,689.51, plus the fire station or Fire Department and association request to use town property on 9/11.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, a roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainor?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Perfect. Okay. I like that better. So, okay, that sounds good.
Was 7:12 as written?
7:12 was as written.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mark will get those to you. All right.
I have, I have gotten those to you.
Oh, she's already got them? Okay, perfect. Then we're all set.
I have them.
Okay, good. We received some notification on some repair work or proposed work on the Memorial Bridge, the Ferguson Memorial Bridge. I was wondering if we, if, I'd like to have that on the agenda because it's going to impact traffic. And I'm sure people in the area are going to be interested in that. That's all I've got. Any other suggestions? So that would be the 8/9 warrant. And then I think we were talking about too, is the possibility of doing the parking lot?
Yeah, the parking lot. We may have a contract that needs to be signed with the design services provider for the roof work at the townhouse. I'm not sure about that yet. We also are looking to have an executive session that night regarding a zoning matter and some potential litigation. So it's looking to be a fairly full agenda.
Okay, and if we have anything on the Carver redevelopment, any more information on that, we'll put it on the agenda too.
Yes.
A suggestion or at least a consideration, since I think Liz won't be with us at that next meeting, might we want to hold the parking lot until the succeeding meeting after that?
I can provide an update on all of my stuff, anything that's relevant to me. I know John had been asking for it for a while, so I didn't want it to build up on my account. I can certainly provide an update, or if you'd rather hold it, you can hold it. But it looks like there's room on the agenda right now. There's not so much stuff that, you know.
You know, it's, we did the last one, April 6. We're going to do them every two months. It's July, it's three and a half months, almost four now. So it'll be four if we do it next meeting.
All right, so you want to do it at the next meeting, 8/9?
I'd like to, yeah.
Okay, all right. And Liz, you're going to provide your update?
Yes.
And we'll just work through the list then. Okay. All right, any other suggestions? Okay, all right. How about rants and raves? Who'd like to go first?
Well, mine's a quickie. Just actually a pleasure to have guests joining us tonight, citizens joining us. We get a little lonely, and it's just great to have input and great to have people that are involved and maybe as an entree to being involved in town government by membership as well. So glad you guys are with us. Thank you.
John, do you have anything?
Yeah, my rave, I guess, would be that the vaccination goals for the state of Massachusetts seem to be doing very well, even though they've ticked up a little. There's only three states of the 50 that are qualifying for the best in the, in the U.S. Massachusetts, Vermont, and I forget the other one, but it's New England. And the outcome of that is it was fun to, we had, we kicked off the genealogy meeting, and most people were without masks at the library. Over in the other end of the library, they were doing a program for the children with magician. Again, most people without masks. And it just felt nice to be able to see faces instead of trying to figure out who was behind there. So that's my rave.
Excellent. I've got two raves. My rave is finally being set up with GATRA. What a great opportunity this is for us. And I'm hoping that it is the transportation asset for our seniors and those in need of transportation. You know, I hope it's everything that, that we had planned on, that we're able to provide this much-needed service to our residents. So, so that's one. And then Rob, great to hear about Montello, him keeping up with the grading. I'm very excited about the safety zones, what he's doing there. So I'm just really happy with, what's going on with, with Highway. And kudos to Rob for, for all his hard work down there. All right, so that's it for tonight. Our next meeting will be, is it going to be 5:45 on 8/9? But starting with an executive session probably, Liz?
Yes, yes, probably more realistically for open session, like 6:15.
Okay. All right, so our next meeting will be 8/9. And as Liz indicated, it's probably not going to be until after 6:00 that we're ready for open session. So anyone who would like to join us, you're more than welcome. So I'll, with that note, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.